All Meredith. I say these books are handy tools to have on the table.
It's me. Come this way.
I don't know what you did, but you did admin passwords. That's not gonna work. But I'm not an admin. Okay, thank you both.
Hi, this is Wendy Peterson.
Hi.
So it is 4:30. We've got people in attendance. I think we'll go on ahead and get things ready to go. Scott, you're the acting chair.
I'm the acting chair. Okay, we'll call meeting to order.
Mr. Nimmick. Mr. Lyons. Mr. Tunnel. Commissioner Clements. Commissioner Faraday, absent. Yes, Commissioner Cronin is also absent.
Okay, so, um, did you want to go over that consent issue or question before we start?
We can just go through it now. Um, so subdivisions that have an approved designer view CCNR mechanism through the city, um, don't have to do the full designer review process, which is what triggers a public hearing. So for Rivers Crossing, um, is one that is, it has shoreline setback requirements, but not a designer view. And therefore it is not a public hearing. It's just a shoreline application. You'll see it a lot more frequently on scenic grounds stuff like Lick Creek Meadows.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, I guess the next item is, the first item is to review and approve the minutes. If you have any concerns or questions, changes.
I move, we approve the minutes from August 3rd.
On second. All in favor? Aye. So that there's a preliminary development plan review and a pre-app for.
That's me. Alright, yeah, so commissioners, um, this is kind of the first step, the first formal step in the process. Um, we are starting the winter round of code amendments, uh, the, keeping it pretty basic, um, since we're all pretty new here and kind of getting our feet under us still. So the primary goals are going to be, um, just so the code reflects how we're practicing. We have a lot of administrative interpretations that are 15 plus years old now that are kind of buried in our website that are making it a little difficult to find the correct interpretation of how we are practicing our zoning process. And so we want to incorporate a lot of those into code. And then the other one is, uh, food truck regulation, which was requested by the, uh, city council that we kind of come up with some ordinances on how and where they are allowed to operate. Guys, have any questions? I'd love to hear.
So you, have you already pre-identified the, the code applications that you want addressed, or is it something you start doing?
Uh, we're pretty early on into the process, so if there, if there's anything specific that you would like addressed. Doesn't have to be here. Yep, yep, we've been doing a lot of research on just how other places are managing it. Yeah, smaller, yeah, I mean, yeah, there's no shortage of how Seattle and Atlanta and New York. We're also looking a lot of Sandpoint, Sun Valley, uh, Fort Collins has a really good ordinance and we're basing a lot of our stuff off of those.
So then all those ordinance, there'll be more process once you guys get all of your working together and decide how.
Yeah, yeah, it's, go back with an application, probably November, I think is the current plan is when we'd be submitting.
So you're also asking if there's any other codes that we may want?
Yeah.
That we can think of.
Right.
Okay, I did for, for that one for now.
That's all we got, yep.
So then we're move on to pre-app for conditional use permit for Payette Lakes Middle School. Is someone here to talk about that, or? Was it Star 7?
And we aren't able to broadcast any slides or anything or share the screen because our equipment isn't talking to them too well, but you can present and we have the site playing up on the screen.
Okay, I'd be happy to. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, uh, we are just beginning the conditional use permit process. Maybe Meredith has brought you up to speed, but the original school in 1994, I believe, was, uh, went through that, the same process and, um, due to flooding or fire or something, we found the original application, but didn't find the, the drawings that went along with it. So, given the environment, we've, Meredith and others felt like we should, uh, amend that and move forward with the new conditional use permit. We're doing that. And this is the beginning stages of that. The, the project in itself is primarily an addition to the existing Payette Lakes Middle School, adding classrooms to the south and east end. Also some, there's an alternate there for an infill in between where the gymnasium and locker rooms are and the cafeteria for an alternative classroom there. And then the blue areas indicate some remodel spaces or tenant improvement type spaces to bring those up to speed and, and add a security vestibule and, and that sort of thing. Uh, limited site work, uh, as it relates to the building. As we move forward, of course, one of our requirements will be to explain and, and detail the landscaping and how we will address site, uh, moving forward, but the green spaces, we're missing that as a school. We're looking forward to getting a, a more level play field for those students. Um, and the, one of the, uh, other facets of the project is to rework the, um, traffic pattern and to try to, to help any congestion that may be caused at certain times of the day and periods of the year when we get heavy snowfall and Paragon Engineering was hired a couple of years ago, 1990, or excuse me, 2019 to, to create a, a traffic pattern study and they, and they came up with five solutions in the school district, selected option five. And we're working through that. That may not be the perfect solution, but it's definitely a starting point in recognizing that the, that the, there is some traffic problems at certain times of the day and, and year, of course. And, uh, and so that's really it in an, in an, in an overall view of what we're doing to the project.
Any questions? Okay. Guess we'll move on.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dion.
Alright. So that takes us to the consent agenda. Record survey 2113 was pulled. Yeah, so we're just looking at the other, I guess it's four items, or three items. And if, unless there's some questions and somebody wants to pull one of those and talk about, uh, if there's any motion for approval or otherwise on consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, 7.
All in favor? Okay. Anybody's here for those items? They're approved.
One hand in the back.
One hand in the back, so. That brings us to all business conditional use permit 2101, design review 2113 for 4.8 Colorado Street. And I, now what, did we leave the public hearing open on that?
Yes.
So someone here to talk on that?
As far as applicants?
Hello? I'm Laura Forsythe. I'm here as well as Mike Myers is on the phone and so is Richard Stratten.
Uh, my name is Margaret Hicks and I'm on the phone too.
Well, we're gonna wait for, um, public comments until a little bit later. Um, so right now the applicant is gonna do their presentation.
Margaret, I believe you're the next agenda item as well.
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Margaret Hicks. Do I give my address?
No, not yet. Wait until DR 2129 comes up.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, Brian.
Yeah.
This is Todd. I'm here if you need me for anything.
Alright, we'll let you go ahead and do the applicant's presentation for that time.
Okay, um, thank you all for your time. Uh, we, uh, we've revised a few things per your guys' direction on the last, uh, go around. Uh, we've, uh, did a traffic study. Um, and turned that in. We've also, uh, provided some renderings from Colorado Street for your review. Um, Brian asked us to show kind of what it would look like from the street, looking up because we would be seeing the back of the three duplexes along Colorado Street. So here's a sample of the renderings, um, along there. Um, we've also provided, uh, additional renderings to Brian, um, showing the front. That's, that's, these, these are the, what that looks like from the front. And, uh, we have updated the landscaping plan and worked with Kurt to, uh, save some trees and kind of revised our storm, um, to allow us to save for, uh, some more trees. And we provided a narrative, uh, to Kurt on how we would address the site and the removal of the trees and the replanting. I, I, I'm not sure if you guys can see that or not. But we did do an updated landscaping plan showing the, uh, the plantings. Can you show them the? There it is, right there. Yeah. We've kind of meandered the entrance. When you come off of Colorado onto the project and kind of pulled that over towards unit one. And we saved a lot of trees along there. Uh, originally it came straight in and it turned and now we've kind of pulled it over. You have a small retaining wall behind one just, uh, just because of the grade there and to allow for a backyard, uh, for unit one. One A and one B. So, um, this is what we are proposing for, uh, for, for the, both the, uh, 30 units, 15 of them will be workforce housing and the other, uh, the one will have another 15 additional units on top of that. So 30 total.
You have any questions, Brian?
Question on the, um, I'm looking at this right, the stairs down to Colorado, are those still in the plan?
Yes.
Last time that they were perhaps not necessary. Is that correct?
What was discussed last? Was individual accesses off of the units facing Colorado.
Correct. So this is a community.
Yes, this is just one access point.
Alright, I wanna make sure that was checked. Where I'm drawing, okay.
Yeah, a community access point, um, that goes up and it's fenced, uh, between the units so that everybody can use it.
Alright, thank you.
What was the address of this workforce housing?
I'm sorry?
I'm pardon me, what was the address for this workforce housing? That is part of this addition?
Yeah, 15 units are dedicated workforce housing. So half of the units.
Okay.
Any else have any questions? Because I guess we'll go to the public hearing first.
It'll be by.
You'll do yours first?
Yeah.
So if you don't have any other questions, let's go ahead and have Brian give the staff report.
Yeah. Um, so yeah, since the last hearing, as you mentioned, um, they have kind of reworked a lot of stuff. The, the biggest concern staff had were the units facing Colorado Street, which were just pretty generic back facing, not a whole lot of presence from the street side. Um, they have added, um, corbels at the peaks, um, little awnings over the side, over the sliding glass windows, uh, thinking up the trim to give it a little more of a craftsman look on those units. So they appear more like a, like a front face of a typical house you'd expect to see. Um, and they've added a lot of landscaping to screen it pretty well. And as well as to mitigate for the loss of trees that's gonna occur on the site. They have been working very closely with Kurt to come up with good plans to manage, um, save as many trees as they can. Um, still, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of trees lost. It just is what it is, um, in order to provide housing. But yeah, they're gonna remediate with landscaping, be pretty careful with their snow removal, uh, to make sure that they're not destroying landscaping they're using as a replacement. And so with that, uh, yeah. Staff recommending approval with the conditions that are included in the staff report and findings. Stand for any questions?
I thought in reviewing, I mean, it was, I, I liked the, the, uh, the way you guys addressed each of the 13 conditions. I mean, it really helped me be comfortable that everything was addressed properly. So, uh, maybe that's not the first time you've done it. It's the first time I remember it being done that way, but it really has helped.
Great.
Anybody else have any questions?
Um, on the, in lieu of construction, have you guys an agreement on how much? It just says sidewalk. It doesn't have an exact frontage or amount.
Right.
Agreement on that?
Generally, they, uh, I mean, the frontage is pretty well defined because it is a measurable watt. And yeah, it's, since the cost of construction is get pretty variable at the moment, it's kind of depending on when they actually come through to get their building permits done that.
So you're requiring it done, this basic, here's the length and that's what you're using?
Right. It's, um, since Colorado Street is not in the right of way, the city would like to alleviate that problem at some point and realign Colorado Street. So it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to require them to actually construct, hence the escrow account.
And, and I'd like to just say something. This is Todd again. I have, we have no problem with that. We understand that the right of way, uh, improvements need to be done. In your approvals of conditions, you mentioned that, uh, that the city of McCall will use the funds in the vicinity of the project. And we only ask that you guys use it for the project if we're putting up the funds for that section. I mean, we, we don't want to put up the money and have it improve somewhere else when we're putting up the money for our project. That's all we're asking.
Oh, sorry. Um, I think the intent is to use those, that money for its improvement along Colorado Street. So I don't think the intention would be to use it on or another project that doesn't.
Based on the alignment or misalignment of Colorado Street, is there gonna be a timeframe? Or is that gonna sit there because that's a can of worms on that street?
Right. It, it is not currently in the capital improvement plan, uh, so we don't have a definitive timeline on it. But it is something that we would be, Morgan may know a little more on.
Gonna do a specific fund or an interest-bearing fund or something. It's not just in their waste, because this is gonna be here.
Um, I don't know of any plans right now. I know there's been discussions of when to do Colorado Street, but I don't think we put it down before yet. But the capital improvement varies from year to year as things get shifted and conditions change on the road.
So there's not specific where these funds will go? Be monitored or, and hopefully an interest-bearing account, because I don't see it happening every while. Not just in the general fund and then, and years of paperwork's lost and nobody has any.
No, it's so the, the escrow account, I mean, it is held with the title company and it's kind of just in there. Uh, so it's, it's, it's in a lockbox. It's just not in the general fund. But yeah, as far as gaining interest and all that, we don't have a whole lot of.
So how much is the decision as to honor applicants' requests that those funds be used specifically for the frontage of this property? Is that left up to the city?
So I mean, it is up to you guys right now, because that is written right now. We can use it, uh, for example, kind of to extend the existing sidewalk that wraps around Growlers would be probably our the most obvious location. So we're not creating islands.
But you can't, because the next properties all go out in the middle of the road. You have to, there are rules to put the sidewalk down.
Right. Would seem to me that if, to me, the language is a little bit, uh, a little bit too loose. Yeah, to me, it should, it should describe my, my view that those, the funds would be used at such time as they could do it across the frontage of the property that provided the funds.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's loose right now because we haven't finalized what that solution would be or what the funds would, would come out to. We haven't talked through that yet. Um, since we were reviewing the traffic impact study to see what would be proportional. So we haven't finalized what those improvements would be or what they would go towards. Or if it would include drainage improvements, um, or a left turn lane, but I don't think it would be, I'm not sure if it would be a left turn lane if the traffic doesn't warrant it.
Well, traffic studies should have determined that. And it says it's not needed, so it shouldn't be required. I mean, if they're gonna do the funds, the funds should go to what they're doing in the above, which would be either pathway or sidewalks. I just, I know that it's gonna be an issue for 50 years. So I don't know if staff could look into having those funds in to some type of interest-bearing account.
You can look into it.
To be sitting in this, I don't know if that's where you'd like to do that anymore. Uh, for that length of time.
Agreed, Sergeant.
And if you got however many thousands of dollars, you might as well get some interest on it even though it's small now.
Keep up with inflation.
So, I mean, we just probably don't need to decide this, that part.
Yeah.
Applicant, but I think it should be specific for that area because at best, you're gonna have one side of the street you're ever gonna be able to do anything on, because there's no way you're gonna have sidewalks on both sides. Not gonna happen. Not with the misalignment that's there. And realistically with it, other people's properties out into the middle of the street as it is already on the north side, the only potential is probably the south side. Best. And that could be an issue because of the slope and some of the driveways as well. But that's for another thing.
Any other questions or staff or comments before the, before the public hearing?
I'm wondering a little bit about some of the grading contours that I'm seeing are straining away from. Will the grading be advised or, or maybe a little more worked through a little bit more during the design process? Is there someplace along the way that?
Yes. I have any comments about the grading, um, and that would have to be addressed prior to the final engineering approval.
Any other questions? Okay then, since we, we didn't close the public hearing, we're at that stage where it's, um, it is a public hearing. If there's someone here to speak about, um, for or against the project, um, if you, you're on your phone, which most of you are, I would guess, it's star six, did it decide? When you push star six, it activates your, your, uh, microphone or whatever and just give it a few minutes or is it a bit of a delay? But if someone's out there that wants to speak, uh, on the project, now's the time.
Which project are you asking for comment on?
The Colorado Street project.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I was under the impression that there might be a meeting called on a 2060 Payette Drive development, which is why I'm joining this meeting. I could have been coming in late or early.
It's the next agenda.
That's the wrong date.
So that's the next item I'm. Soon as we finish this, this item, then we'll move to that item.
Oh, I'm, uh, I apologize. I thought the meeting was about to adjourn. Uh, excuse me.
Oh, no. Neither of you are here for, to speak up. Okay, so one last call for someone to, who, who wants to speak, uh, regarding the Colorado Street project as part of the public hearing. Okay, did we have any additional letters or anything?
Nope.
Well, then hearing, uh, no one speak up, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And, uh, so I guess we need to decide what, um, what our thinking is. If we have questions in moments, we can decide, uh, care of those concerns or comments and if anybody has any, anything they want to talk about that we haven't already discussed.
Somebody explain the sewer situation? What's, right, sir?
I thought the sewer district letter said something about only services.
Yeah, they have since gone to the sewer district and gotten, I believe, conditioned approval for additional service. Conditioned on improvements to the lift station on the other side of 55 and laying new pipe. Yeah.
Some extra money.
And we're working with the sewer district now and they actually sent us over a developer's agreement that we're reviewing.
Where are these utility services taking place? On, on, are these still on Colorado?
Still on Colorado Street.
My apologies.
So yeah, I like the fact they softened the front aspect of those. Terrace. To make that shift in elevation, I think was good. The walk in front of you and that I think is just fusion. The world, they're going to do it anyways. To help. That's a big concern. Overall, I see they came back with all the consequences we had in the last meeting. Putting that access issue.
They did what they could as far as saving much recost.
Yeah, I, I would still like to see the language tightened up a little bit on that. The funds for the sidewalk to, to be conditioned at such time as they could improve the this project. That the money would be held for that reason and that reason only. You guys again.
I think that's appropriate. Especially my traffic study results that came back. Where it's not showing the significant impact.
Do you have any concerns?
Weird drainage, right?
I don't love the grading.
No, the grading is odd. I can see that on the sofa.
Yeah. But if it's going to be refined during the design process.
What would have to, are the health garages full of water? Just not possible.
Yeah, for me, it would have, I would have liked to have seen it at least attempt to follow a little bit more of the natural, I really feel there and it's kind of a pain but.
Well, the engineering, we address that, we'll be looking at it and continuing to work with them and and for me, that's what should be done based on your concerns. Someone want to make a motion?
Commissioner Nimitz, would you like to state that you have read through the previous minutes and recordings and so that you will be able to vote on this?
I have read through the previous minutes and I also watched the videos of the previous meeting and the training.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we approve CUP 2101 and Design Review 2113 with conditions as stated with modifying the language into where the funds for the sidewalk are dedicated for, or recommendation on CUP.
I second that motion.
Do we need a roll call vote? Can this be used?
We'll do a roll call, yeah. Commissioner Nimitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunnel?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinones?
Aye.
So do we, do we need another vote on that? Is it really?
There doesn't need to be.
Okay. Then we're onto new business, which is Designer View 2129 and Shoreline 2109, 2060 Pay-It Drive. Is someone available to speak on that?
Yes, this is Stanford with Element Design Company. I represent the owner on that project. And I believe I have on here also Justin DeCueen, who is our design, our director of construction.
Yep, I'm here.
And I'm not sure there's anyone else. My landscape architect may be here. But I don't think he is. Is there? How would you guys like me to, you want me to just give you a brief overview of the project or?
Yeah.
You want to just go into?
Sorry, what was your first name on that 2060 Pay-It?
Stanford.
Chadford.
No, Stanford, just like the university. Is this Chris?
Hi, Chris. Eric Peters, Eric Peterson.
Okay.
This is the public. Could we just wait until the public comment period opens? We'll announce it, I promise.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Oh yeah, Stanford, just an overview and, and if you have some specific, you know, usually we look, we look at at landscape plans and at least in general and, you know, give us setbacks and those kinds of things. Elevations, the elevation of the building and so on.
Well, I'm just calling in. So you guys have the elevations in front of you. Can you? We can just go through it really quickly. Essentially, if you go back to the site plan really quick, we'll just start there and I'll kind of give you an overview of the, of the project. So the right there is good. So this is 2060 Pay-It Drive. The lot is a sloped lot. It's on, it's on the lake. The, the, where the, the building is located is across that sort of flat spot across the site. It's still slopes. And then there's kind of a hinge point where it begins to drop down a little bit steeper and our, our, the, the footprint of the building sits kind of right there at that hinge point of the site. But it is a three-story building. But if you look at it, it's really two stories that are kind of stepping down across the site. And then you have like a overlapped area between the, the two different levels that are kind of sliding past each other if you look at it that way. So that is from the side view. I think if you go up one sheet, you'll see it from the front and the back. So and the one thing that's hard to get from elevations is kind of the stepping of the, of the massing. You just see like a three-story element, but each, there's no point at which when you're looking at this from the side elevation that you're seeing a three-story mass. You're really just seeing a two-story or one-story. And then set back further than that, maybe 10 feet, 20 feet, depending on the elevation. Then you'll see another mass beyond that further back.
Has the slope and grading from the elevation you're proposing your property been taken in?
Yes, we're, we're really trying, I mean, other than we're excavating for the lower level, we're trying to keep preserve all of those trees on that site as many as possible. So the, you know, regrading obviously has a huge impact on the tree. So we're, we're we're trying to minimize the amount of regrading. And if you go to the grading plan, you can kind of see the areas that will be regrading. It's not substantial. I think it's, it's, it's towards the end. After the architectural sheets, you'll see a grading plan. Yep, right there. And so the darker line, the darker lines are where we're, we're regrading. We're really regrading kind of a little bit at the driveway to kind of get that down as gently as possible. And then there's some recording that happens towards the back of the lot. And essentially what we're trying, trying to do is where we have those retaining walls that are yes, sorry.
This is Scott Tunnel. I just wanted to ask anybody who is on the call to please hold their comments until the public hearing and let Stanford go through the, the review with, with the commissioners. So appreciate your cooperation. Anybody else that's out there on the call? Go ahead.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Scott. So you've got a couple of retaining walls in the back that are small retaining walls. The main purpose of those is to provide some area where we can add a little bit more fill because we are cutting. And that also allows us to, where the water drains around the building can kind of bring it in there. And that gives us an area where we can filter the water as it goes back into the ground. And eventually we'll make its way, you know, into the lake. But I will say the owner has been really, we've been, we've tried to been very conscious about one retaining that, that the natural huckleberry patch that is up in the west, south corner. And then maintaining as many of the trees, especially the larger caliber trees. And then the, the actual building where it kind of jets out towards the lake, that's just as natural clearing through there that we're kind of taking advantage of. There are going to be a few trees. I, I believe there were two or three trees that, that are, that will be taken out. But other than that, I think we've done a pretty good job of trying to, you know. I mean, it's a big house that we've, we've done a really good job of kind of trying to make it so that you're not looking at a really large mass. And if you look at it from the front of the building, we are you know, at that grade, you're really just seeing a two-story element from the front of the house. And that, and then there's like that barrel roof that drops off on both sides of the lot. And so that elevation across that front, I think is, I don't know if you can zoom into that, but it, it's we're like, I believe 10 to 11 feet below like the 35 height limit at the front of the house. And then towards the back, because it steps down, it's, it's kind of tricky to see an elevation, but we, you're really looking at a two-story element and then that three-story element is just from the front of the house as it kind of drops off and follows the terrain down the natural slope of the, the property. So I think that, that's kind of a brief overview. If you guys have any questions, I'd, I'd love to answer anything that you had.
Do you got any questions?
You know, it's probably stating the obvious. You're, you're not anywhere near your maximum lot. Or it is.
Within a couple of feet, I believe.
Oh, extra feet.
He was asking if it was near the maximum lot coverage and it is very close.
So smaller than, okay.
Is the walkway down towards down a, is that an existing walk? You have like concrete path?
Um, it's not going to be a concrete path. It's going to be like stepping stones that are just set like in peat moss and other kind of things. So it's mostly just a path to get down to the lake. There are some steps that, you know, where you've got that those will be like some stone steps. Obviously it's hard to do multiple steps that are, but we're trying to bring it down as gradually as possible you along the south side of the, the building and down to the, to the lower level.
Okay, but they will be individual stones, if you will, or whatever.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I guess there's no more questions from here. So we'll ask staff to review their report for us and then, then we'll go.
Yeah, so this application is, is for a very large single-family residence. It's 9,999 square feet. It's the 35-foot height limit. It's each of the side setbacks is within a couple of square feet of maximizing lot coverage. It, it fits all the dimensional standards though. It just comes very close wherever it can. It is pretty unique design, but this generally fit the mountain modern aesthetic, the barrel roof and something you don't see a whole lot of here, but that doesn't mean it that wouldn't fit in. They're doing an interesting green roof to minimize the at least the drainage issues and heat effects and things like that that typically come with development, which is an interesting aspect to it. As in, yeah, they're putting plantings on the roof, I believe, mosses and things like that. One thing that kind of didn't make it into staff report to fix because it came in at the last minute is this landscaping plan that includes synthetic lawn within the 50-foot shoreline setback. It is obviously not a plant listed on the native and suitable plant list. For, probably shouldn't be in there. It does provide some better drainage and allows for filtering of water and things like that, stormwater. But yeah, staff's opinion that it should be kept out of 50-foot shorelines setback. Yeah, I'll stand for any questions.
Brian, if I can just speak one, one little comment on the, on the grass. I think the original plan was from our landscape architect, David with Abacos. He, one of the reasons I think we, we decided to swap that out and I thought it was a good argument is just that the substrate that we can put below that allows us to put like a finer sand and other aggregates under the soil that will help sort of filter any water that comes down and lands in that area. And we kind of always looked at that as an area where we could hard, collect some of that water and filter it before it gets into the ground and then, and back into the lake. But originally, originally it was designed as kind of a natural fescue grass area.
This, this works because of the base required. So the people use this often as a plant for pets.
Yeah.
For the pet waste to wash through. Actually, how they, how they build the substrate and that's quite clever.
I'm just wondering, I was wondering about, I'm trying to understand the reasoning for not allowing it or recommending it not be in the 50-foot.
The reasoning is that our code says no structures, perched beaches, or non-native plant species within the 50-foot. Shoreline setback.
Okay.
And so, I mean, it does achieve the same goals as we're trying to do with that code. Um, but it is strictly speaking outside of the regulation.
Non-native, okay. Non-native, so like regular straight up normal lawn grass would also not be.
Yeah, we typically recommend that if they want a lawn, they tightly plant fescue grasses and mow it.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand. Thank you for that.
The walkway coming down and then there's the new dock and it looks to be some type of pier type system. I'm guessing based on this picture of the rocks below. Is that included in this plan or do they have to get?
No, they, they have gotten approval through IDL for that.
And the steps also, then they're not considered strict?
Uh, pathways can be up to eight feet wide through there.
So, are there other things that you wanted to add?
Uh, no, I believe so.
Time to open the public hearing. So, if there's anybody that wants to speak for or against or about the project. Okay, yeah, we'll start. We've got someone here, so we'll, we'll start with you.
My name is Nancy Peterson and we have a whole 2070 Payette Drive, which is right next door. So, if I can hand out, I could touch that house. So, my question is, and by the way, that's pretty neat about the new condominium. And in retrospect to that size, if you take the 57,000 square feet of new, 15,000 square feet. So, this home is one-third of that size. So, if you were to take those three levels and slice them all at one level and probably take up that whole new, brand-new condominium. So, I just thought that was interesting. So, my big concern tonight is that home doesn't seem like it's shrinking the footprint. And with protecting and preserving Mother Nature, I just can't imagine that a 9,000-square-foot house next door is in compliance with the surrounding homes. It will also totally, and Brian, I sent you this letter, block an existing cabin site directly behind it. Totally forever block that view of the lake. There are 12 trees, as I understand, Stanford, that are earmarked for removal. These are old growth trees.
Yes, there.
Yeah, 12 oak. I've walked that property many, many times, even this morning. So, that's my issue. So, I am obviously opposed to that. Huge, because build a cabin, build a home, but 9,000 square feet, is that really going to be used for a single-family dwelling? Or could it possibly be used and will encourage use beyond that? What does that mean? Lodge meetings, business meetings? Those are my, I object to the size of the new construction. And all other kinds of drainage and on and on. So, yes, we, we live in a 1928 original cottage, which is right next door. So, it's going to be a dwarf that'll look like a doghouse too. This property. So, I'd ask the commissioners to consider that as well.
Thank you. We have one more here that will, will speak. Give us your name and address.
My name is Chris Peterson. My, uh, full-time address is 618 Millway Court, Virginia, Washington. My local address is 2070 Payette Drive. And I'm speaking not only for myself, but for my neighbors in the adjacent area. I have talked to most of them. We are all in agreement, we're against, uh, structures large as proposed. We have, as my wife said, enjoyed the pristine semi-wilderness area since 1927 when my grandfather first leased the property. And to take all that away seemed like
Just like, don't sit down, let's go to the car.
Wrong thing to do. Now, I look around, believe, and see a lot of larger, more sized homes. And I'm sure that this is a structure of some sort on a 2016 property would be inevitable. But 10,000 square feet does not seem reasonable. I just wanted to thank the planning commission for the opportunity to express not only my, uh, opposition, but the neighbor's opposition to the proposed structure. Thank you very much.
Okay, if there's someone on the phone that would like to speak for, discuss about the project, go ahead and unmute yourself, star six, and give us your name and address. And we'll just wait for you to come on.
I would, sir. My name is Cindy Glazier. My address is 27 Sunburst Drive, Cody, Wyoming. And, um, my family's property that my grandparents built in 1951 is directly behind the proposed property. And my concerns, I am opposed to the project. My concerns include the lack of time that we've had to make public comments. The letter that my mother received is dated the 27th of August and you requested comments seven days prior to this meeting. Five of those days were non-business days, so I feel like we need an extended period of public comment. I am very concerned about the height of the structure and that it's going to block any view to the lake for any buildings that are behind the structure. And I, um, we have not had a chance to view any request records to view any access or how the driveway, where the driveway will access the property. I'm also curious to know if the snow removal will be provided by Payette County and where that snow will be stored at. And, um, once again, many of these properties have multi-generational uses and the time involved to reply to the letter that we received is not adequate in any way. Also, this lot has a fairly significant slope to it, to the lake. So, how the water is going to be handled that comes off of the structure and is filtered and does not encourage erosion and/or is clean when it makes it back to the lake are very, is a very big environmental concern. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, my name is Wendy Peterson. I, all of the concerns that have been, my address first, I'm sorry. 1-808 First Avenue West, Seattle, Washington, 98119. I, my two questions, in addition to the concerns that everyone else has expressed, I'm in agreement with those. Will this increase our property taxes as a neighbor of this 9,999-square-foot building? What does it do to the, the small cabins around it that have been there forever? And secondly, we haven't had an opportunity to see the plans, but from what I gathered from the conversation from Stanford, the building goes right up to the edge of the property line. One concern would be the snow load that comes off of the roof. And does that dump onto our property, which is right next door? Um, that, the snow load would be of concern. Is there any type of, you know, re, I don't know, redoing of this 10,000-square-foot structure that seems to be taking over? And I guess a third concern, it's a single-family dwelling that's huge. We know that Orville also owns the single-family dwelling right next door. It's also huge. Um, just pointing that out that there's a lot of single-family dwellings in the name of single-family going on. So, we're just curious about, about all that. It's definitely going to impact the smaller, those of us that have been around and those of us that are neighbors. Thank you.
So, if there's anybody else, remember it's star six and give yourself just a few minutes to, or a few seconds for it to open.
Hello, my name is Eric Peterson. I'm Wendy Peterson's sister. I, uh, reviewed the conversations from, uh, Justin and Stanford, uh, both the designer-construction and also architect David. And, uh, I just, if this project may or may not move forward on my family's passionate words, uh, if we could see construction designs, both civil, uh, including electrical storm runoff, where this is going to go, and also adjacent property lines, elevations, and, uh, you know, some erosion control from an environmentalist. Uh, I heard words like, this allows us, our advantages are, uh, pretty good to others. And, uh, you know, chin, uh, chinety elevation. I don't know what that means, but I could have misheard that. But, uh, the scope of plans and a future projection and also longevity, if they want to landscape out to the lake, would also be formidable to all of us. We can see what the future designs are going out to the lake and approaching our water rides. Uh, that's all I had to say and, uh, I will sign out here. Thank you.
Thank you.
This, this is Margaret Hicks. I don't know if I muted it or not. I'm sorry.
No, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, we own 2072 Ferndale. Um, the back of our property comes down to Payette Drive. We are right next door to, uh, the Mueller Properties, Jan Stevenson. Um, and we also have a view of the lake from the top of our property. And we're concerned about the 9,000-square-foot home that's going to block the sun from most of our small little cabins in that area. A lot of us have been here 60 years plus and it's kind of remained a, a nice, small cabin area. Um, I, I know it's great they're building a cabin, but it seems like maybe they could think about who they're moving in around. Um, and, and like I heard, if they own both the complexes, does that mean we're going to have traffic everywhere, dust blowing on all of our homes? Uh, you know, I, I don't want to be picky about everything, but I think we should maybe have some say as to the size of things that go in around us. So, um, thank you for listening to my comments. I'm going to stop here.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
Okay, hi, this is Justin McEwen. I'm with Element Design Build. I live at 723 East Knoll in Eagle, Idaho. And it won't take long, but I did want to just say a few things. Um, it's a big cabin and we, we know and appreciate that. But the owners, the owners have expressed an interest in minimizing the impact of the cabin on the land. Um, we're, we are not the cheapest builder. We take a long time to design and to build homes. And the owner's chosen us because of the architecture. And he's chosen the, uh, landscape designer who is local to McCall, um, because he understands that particular site. And we've done everything we can to integrate this large home into this lot. So much so that we've even incorporated this green roof to try and, um, preserve this natural feel. And then as far as clients go, Orville's a great client. This client, excuse me, is a great client for us because he wants things done right. And we've done everything we can, and we do everything we can to make sure we build right. He spent a lot of money on architecture to make sure that this, this large home, cabin home, gets integrated into the, the lot. Um, and that the, the runoff works and that it's integrated into landscaping. Of anyone that we've ever worked for, uh, this client cares more about landscaping than anyone I have ever known. He has a, an arborist on his staff, um, for some of his other projects. He cares. And so, were I, were I in that position, I'd just kind of like to know that. The other kind of factor to that is, um, you already have a feel for how often they use their property because they have another property up there. And that's not going to change. What's changed is the size of his family and his children. And really, he wants a place that when they gather, the kids can all come and they can fit their families now. They're kind of at a different generational level. And I can't make any assurances or promises on who's going to be up there or what views are going to be. All I can say is that we are a really good builder. We really care. We do things right. Uh, it takes us longer to do it and we're a lot more expensive, but it's because we, we want to do things the right way. So, I, that's, that's, that's all I want to share. So, I, uh, we definitely appreciate all the comments and understand the concerns. Uh, and I think they're valid. But, uh, in, in terms of, in terms of what's possible, I think this particular design for this particular client is a good case scenario for the area.
Thank you.
Am I speaking with? David?
No, that was Justin McEwen.
Oh, sorry, getting the, the design engineers wrong. Uh, I appreciate, uh, your design and landscape. Uh, as myself and those who have spoken before me, the, uh, landscape that is pre-existing is the only thing that everybody wants to see. So, uh, in my inclination of concerns about how you're going to change that landscape, those, those were the only issues that I was bringing up. Uh, I have no doubt in your, uh, abilities to be a strict architect. Uh, we were just looking at, uh, preserving what has existed around the surrounding properties that I'm looking at right now. Pots 2, 2052, 2056, 2056, 2066, 270, 260, and ours, of course. So, uh, anyway, uh, is there any way that? So anyway, is there any way that this, the neighbors, myself and anybody else could get a projected design of the runoff, not only the elevations and the civil engineering plans on what you foresee happening within the next, not only five, but 10 years? McCall has been around for well over a hundred years. So we'd like to see something that is not going to damage that landscape that you possibly might need to change.
Okay. The rules for public hearing, when you, you speak, we ask you to speak, we ask for your name, we ask for your, your address, and when you're done, you're done. You don't continue to discuss things with other people. So please, I would appreciate you following the small number of rules that we do have. We do have a, an agenda that has additional items on it and we need to get to those as well. So please obey the rules. Anybody else?
I think we should make it clear to, to applicant that that wasn't the commissioner asking him to buy the documents.
Yeah, I, as, as far as Stanford, that was, that was not a commissioner talking. It wasn't a city staff person talking. I don't know who it was because it didn't identify himself. So disregard what he, what he asked and we'll try to address it, you know, from, from our office view.
The property owner living right next to the property you're trying to develop.
Well, who's talking? Please, we, we need to move forward. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And at this point in time, the general procedure is that the applicant has an opportunity to, to respond to the concerns and questions that, that people have asked. And so we'll turn it back over to you, Stanford, and.
Okay. I appreciate that. In terms of, obviously, there's no getting around the fact that, you know, you put a structure in that that's going to impact the area. I think as an architect, it's our responsibility to try to deliver what our clients have asked us to, to give them and, and try to be mindful of the way it is going to impact the environment and the surrounding views. And we've done everything that we know how on, on, that's in my tool palette to try to bring things in. It's a, it is a large building, but the, the couple of things that we've done to try to minimize that footprint is we've stacked things on top of each other as much as we can and that helps minimize that footprint. We've also kind of set the building back so it steps. It's not just a, an extrusion or a three-story structure that just goes straight up from the footprint all the way up. And you know, that is a lot more, it costs a lot more to build that way, but it's not necessarily about the cost efficiencies. It's trying to provide something visually that doesn't appear as big as it is. I think elevation wise, it's hard to read a building in elevation. I think the, the rendering from the backside really does feel large, but from the front, you're really looking at a two-story building. And the calculations I've done, I think you, you're obviously going to have an impact on, on the views, but if, like the cabin behind us, I believe you're still going to have a view over the top of this structure because of the way the grading works. It's not, it's not exorbitantly tall structure. In terms of the drainage, we have the, we hired a civil engineer who did all of the drainage study and calculations for the site per all the guidelines that are given and they're, they are pretty rigorous and, and doing all the site running drainage off the, the building. And the whole goal of that was to make sure that any additional drainage that the building is adding is taken care of within the landscaping. And I think we've done, I think our engineers have done incredible job. I think I really appreciate your guys' staff, Brian and Morgan. They've been super responsive in helping us get everything in. In terms of the snow potentially going off the side of the buildings, one of the advantages of doing a low sloped or flat roof is that we can hold most of that snow on the building. It's designed to hold the snow. And so there should be no snow falling off to the side of the, the property. One of the reasons we did it that way is just also to protect any vegetation. Whenever you have snow that slides off the side of a building, it can not only be dangerous to occupants, but it also destroys landscape. So we're holding all that snow on there. No, there's, there's no snow that's going to impact the adjacent properties in terms of that. Yeah, I mean, we, I, I, I understand it's hard when you see a, a large structure like this going in and, and your neighbor and all the cabins out there are, are relatively small, but this is, you know, the program that they wanted. This is what they wanted to achieve. They wanted a place to gather their family on, on special occasions. The road, Payette Drive, one of the requests by the owner was to not develop that road all the way through to kind of minimize traffic through the area also, I will say, because he wanted to maintain that landscaping. So the, the access to the property is actually from the north down Payette, but there'll still be a break in that, in that road. So, I mean, I think it's nice because you'll still have that nice landscape that's still there. We're not going to plow that pit road all the way through to the connecting two properties. And I think that's another nice kind of feature that we've, we've tried to maintain. I don't know if there's anything else I can address. I hope that, that, I mean, I'm very mindful of, of the community and your guys' concerns and I hope you feel it, that we're, we have, we've really tried our best to, to give an architecture that's respectful of, of the environment and also of the neighbors. And it, it is a large structure. There's nothing I can necessarily do about that other than what we've already done in terms of the stepping and trying to bring that building down in scale by just architectural shifts. And that's it. I, I do appreciate the, the city McCall and your guys' staff. I've worked with a lot of planning staff over the course of my career and I, I, your guys are, are probably one of the best, very responsive, very helpful in helping address all of the items and go through all of your guys' standards and get all the information that's required for an application like this. It's a very intense process and they went above and beyond to help us get that information and provide that to the planning commission. And I'll just say that and thank you for your time.
Thank you. So. When, or Stafford?
Didn't that, I did that already.
Oh, you did?
We did.
Yeah. I guess it got a little long.
Yeah. Okay. Got lost.
Can you clarify once again?
Yeah.
I was just doing some rough math trying to scale this. It appears at the apex of the second story that we're roughly 25 feet. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's how, it, the, the callouts all kind of got lost in the, in the reducing of the packet for the internet. But yeah, it's roughly, I believe it's 27 feet from the street side.
From the street side?
Yeah.
Stanford, by any chance, if you're still there, do you happen to have an elevation peak of the building?
Do I have elevations of what of the building?
Like the actual elevation? You've got the ground level at 5021.5. Do you happen to, to know the elevation at the top?
Yeah, it should be on those drawings. Are you unable to see?
Twenty-four.
Yeah, I gave it 25 feet.
Yeah.
There you go. 25 feet.
So, okay. Plus, what was your 24?
Twenty-four and a half, yeah.
Eighteen feet to the.
I will say that I think the square footage that was mentioned is a little off just because when we talk about square of a home, usually you're talking about the living area. The, the numbers that are in here represent the garage footprint and porch and, and all the, anything that's under the roof essentially. So I think the building is actually closer to, I don't have it right in front of me and I deal with square footages all the time, but it's, it's closer to 7,000 square feet. It's not to say that that's, that's small, but it's not 10,000 square feet living area.
Thank you for that clarification. I was wondering that as well with the recar. Couldn't see where you were coming up to 10,000 living space. So basically what you're saying, Christina, is that if you're viewing your house standing out in the driveway, it's 18 feet above grade.
Yeah. It's like helping me understanding all that from the, from the ground level, we're at a 1521 and a half. It's just a 5046 and our driveway grade is at 5028. So 46 to 28.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where I.
Forty-six from, yeah.
So 18 feet from the driveway ground to the top of it.
That's your view line.
Yeah, that's your view line.
And then I, I was also doing some other math, I have a calculator, which is dangerous, but I can look up only 60% of that structure would be, as Christina has described it. The other 40% is 12 feet or 11 feet less than that because it's the flat roof.
That would be the top.
So that'd be the top, as Christina described. You have 60% of it roughly, it would be that 18 feet from that line of sight.
And that line of sight, man, it'd be nice to have a, we got a view from the driveway. The line of sight, that peak on this, can you see the peak elevation again from the front? It is sort of right in the middle of the building. It's just sort of behind this tree there.
I think there's going to be a lot of other ones that would be a lot higher.
Right. Well, here's, here's what code would allow. Code would allow 35 feet across the whole area of the building envelope. If you wanted to build a, call it a 6,000 square foot structure with a front load garage instead of a side load garage, you can construct a 35-foot mass within your building envelope. That would be the option. It would be hard to come up with reasons to deny that. 35-foot structure would have presented as long as you had all the criteria.
I mean, I think, I think the design, I think it's really important that when, to listen to what he said about how the different levels break up the mass, you know, because we've looked at for eight years now, I've looked at every new house is built on the lake and the big concern we have is the mass from the lake. Because all the homes, many of the homes are much larger than this. And, and so I think they've done an excellent job of trying to address that size and, and reduce the, the look of this very big blank wall of windows.
On the 212, that, that roof softens out as well. You could easily take this to an 812 or, or 1012 and use all of your height and create a heck of a mass.
Yeah.
Or just redoing your, your roof design.
Yeah. Highly doubt we'll see many applications that'll have this low profile on the street side.
Right.
Which would be much higher in effect, people behind would be even more so. Part of the thing that we got to deal with is the codes that we have within, if it's within our parameters of the code, we can't just deny it based on, as long as it fits within the code.
Right.
And this one is well under that as far as height from the street that view height.
Isn't there something in the comp plan about?
Anybody want to bring any other items up before we maybe consider entertaining motion?
Builder made a, a good comment with regard to structure holding the snow, but that's an obvious, which is good for protecting the landscape outside of that setback.
So that.
Michelle is on the line. Michelle is on the line who knows a lot of the comp plan very well.
Any other points of discussion or you want to make a motion?
No, I'm good to make the motion. I move that we approve designers from 2129 and shoreline 2109. Do we have any conditions?
If you guys want to address the synthetic lawn in the shoreline setback, it's only.
Okay, I need to retract the motion.
Okay, I need to retract the motion. We didn't address the lawn. What, how do we address the material that isn't considered natural?
It falls into the structure in my mind.
Okay.
Like it's a structure within the 50 foot. My understanding is that
It's, it's a gray area. We didn't administer approval recently for a different synthetic lawn. Um, the, by the nature of issuing an admin approval for it, it would give it some credence as a structure rather than landscaping. Um.
So, hold on. Cause I thought we just, I thought we discussed that as it is, even if it were regular lawn, it wouldn't be allowed.
It would not as regular.
Right.
No.
As Kentucky bluegrass or some similar.
But it's not regular lawn.
How much of it is in the setback?
A 47 portion almost.
Can you see on that topo?
Yeah. The, are the, the retaining walls are allowed?
As long as they're under 30 inches, which they are.
We got a small section of the middle one and probably three. Love the
All right, yeah.
So it's just this synthetic itself?
Right. Yeah.
Because it's not a native plant.
Right.
But it would be allowed on the parts inside the setback, correct?
Yes, if they
If they wanted to redesign.
They wanted to redesign, just include it within the area outside the 50 foot setback.
Yeah.
That would be allowed.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah, I mean, I think the way I think that it's code that is not allowed.
Right.
Yeah, so.
They would have to apply for a variance if they wanted to change that anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So would the motion be like that we would have that removed from the 50 foot setback?
Correct. Okay, reset. Start over.
Okay.
A move we approve on designer review 2129, shoreline 2109 with removing the synthetic turf proposed that is outside of the setback on the rear.
Wait, wasn't that?
That's within the 50 foot.
It's within the 50.
That wasn't listed in the original condition we approved?
No, the staff report went out and then they sent out our revised landscape plan.
Yeah. So the motion is to approve uh, the design review and shoreline with the exception of removing the synthetic material from the
The 50 foot.
50 feet above high one.
Okay, great.
So that's the motion. One second. I'll thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Okay. Then we go to PUD 2101, SUV 2104 and designer B 2131 on 116 Thule Street. Tim Davis, I think, is speaking on behalf of that.
The applicant has requested that this be continued.
I need, oh, read it.
Yeah.
And continue, yeah, so we want to, we need to make
Make a motion, open the public hearing, make a motion to continue to next month's meeting.
Okay, so uh, go ahead and we, it does call for a public
It is a public hearing, yes.
So we need to open the public hearing and then ask for a motion to continue moving the public hearing.
Correct.
Anybody want to make that motion? Can I make the motion?
You need to open the public.
I, I, okay, I'll open the public.
Yeah. Now, somebody else needs to make a motion.
Yeah. So somebody want to make?
I'll make the most
You go ahead, though. I, I gotta listen a couple more times.
I make the motion that we can continue the, not the public hearing, but continue the
Yeah, the PUD 2101.
Okay, doesn't say we didn't have to do the public.
Right.
All right. The PUD 2101, subdivision 2104 and design review 2131 to our next scheduled meeting. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we go to item number six, which is commission seats reviewing the letters and considering recommendations to city council for the two vacancies.
Here's a second. I haven't seen them online, we have them all online, so you can use all of them as you want.
So
There's four, we got any?
Yep, we got another letter Friday afternoon.
Yeah.
Which didn't get to you guys till today, cause I was out of the apps. Um, but yes. Uh, we have one vacant seat and then Commissioner Faraday has elected to not renew her position for the next
When is that?
The end of this meeting.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess so I guess what we can do is, do we want to have each of the people who are online, the applicants, uh, if they want, the, one at a time, just give us
Sure.
Kind of a brief overview. Okay, this is Commissioner Tunnel. If, if the applicants online, um, if you would like to speak, uh, give us a little bit of uh, quick background and, and maybe, you know, uh, what makes you interested in this, this position? And uh, if we could go through that quickly, then what we would do is we would uh, make a decision without everybody being online, is that correct? I think that's what we've done in the past, is that you've had people who have applied, come in and, and stood up and, and uh, told us about themselves. Then before we made it, took a vote and had a discussion, we asked the applicants to leave. That's what we've done in the past, is what I recall. You don't think so?
I was here when I was applying. I was the only one here because it was the end of the meeting.
Was there anybody else?
Right.
Was there anybody else?
There was nobody else that was actually here. There's another applicant that nobody stayed for the meeting because it's like one of those five hour rooms.
I think on my second term, but I, I just stepped outside and came back in. Whenever I voted, did a little speech and we came back and unfortunately, no, I wasn't fired.
Unfortunately. So Well, I, I for one, if we're gonna have a discussion, I for one would like to go with just the commissioners present, but I don't know.
Yeah, it seems reasonable.
That's reasonable.
Okay, so if there's
That might be a question for Bill in terms of open meeting law.
Yeah, looking at the um, executive session statute right now, give me about 20 seconds to get there. Okay. Uh, I just want to make sure. So, under 74206A, it says to consider hiring a public officer, which we're not hiring anybody, employee or staff member or individual agent, which a member of the board of uh, zoning commissioners is not. Wherein the respective qualities of an individual are to be evaluated in order to fill a particular vacancy or need. So I don't think we fall under A because we're not hiring an officer, employee or staff member. Um, and I'm not sure if we can fell, fall under any of the others. So I don't think that you can get into an executive session on this one, I'm sorry.
Good. All right.
And I guess keep in mind too, it is a recommendation to city council.
Right. Okay, so uh, are all four of them in this binder?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got Ryan Kinzer, Liz Rock, Simon Ingham. Oh, here we go.
Oh, that, that's, okay, that's fine.
And Dave Perry. Okay, all, um, is uh, Ryan Kinzer available and do you want to say a few words about your
Yes, uh, thank you. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yep.
All right, great. Um, yeah, as you mentioned, Ryan Kinzer. Um, I have lived in McCall for 20 plus years now. Um, going on a little longer if you count some seasonal transient kind of work when I was in college. Um, but this has always been a incredibly special place to me, um, my family. And, you know, as a young kid growing up in Idaho, in Lewiston, actually, I pretty much made a choice that I wanted to move here. Um, so I went through college and, and kind of tailored my life to make that possible. Um, I'm now here raising a family. I got a, a kid in Barbara Morgan right now, another one that is scrambling for daycare needs. Um, and we are just like everybody else in town, very concerned about the direction that our town is going. Um, and we want to make sure that we can foster that and move that into a positive direction. Uh, growth is inevitable, it's going to happen. It may not be something that we all um, believe is the right thing or, or what we want, but it is something that happens. It is, you know, it's happening across the entire state of Idaho. It's happening across Boise and um, I hope to, you know, provide a service to the city and to provide a service to the community by helping, you know, foster that growth and point it into a positive direction. Um, which is primarily the reason why I wrote my letter of interest and I'm um, would like to be a part of this group. So if you have any questions, I am happy to entertain them.
Any, any questions? I guess, I'd ask you a question. How, does your career take, have you traveling much?
It does. Um, however, in the last two years, I'm not sure why, most of our travel has been extremely restricted. Yeah. I, I tease about not knowing why. Um, yes, typically my career has me on the road so two, three times a month for a day or two.
Is that, is that something you could plan around the monthly?
Yes, yeah, typically it is, yes. Um, generally our meeting schedules are fairly flexible and, you know, like most meetings these days, you kind of, you know, you pencil it out on your calendar and you see what works.
True. Okay, anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you, it's my pleasure.
And then Liz, if you're online and want to address the group more.
I am, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you all and observe this process today. It's, it's fascinating to me. Uh, name is Liz Rock. Uh, my ties to McCall came uh, in about 2006. My husband's family has close, long ties to McCall and Idaho in general. And he took me up to a pant lake to propose to me, so of course I had to say yes. And uh, we've been coming up here ever since. Uh, he bought a house here in about 2003 and we were finally able to uh, make our life dream of moving up here two years ago. So we moved into that house, just recently bought a new house just down the street from it and have been able to turn that around as a long-term rental, trying to help out the community a little bit and, and get some more housing available to the workforce. Uh, in terms of qualifications, I have a long background with law. I actually have a law degree, so I'm very comfortable taking city code, looking at policy and applying that. And I also do that uh, in my, my, you know, full-time job in my career where I support, uh, I work for a company called Booz Allen Hamilton. We support a number of things. My particular client is the Department of Defense. So I, I do congressional laws and DOD policy and apply those to helping the Navy field systems and develop them and those kinds of things. Uh, in that I do a lot of project management, cost schedule performance. And I think more importantly to this particular position is balancing needs. I, you know, clients have different competing interests, they're all high priorities. How do we find the best solution to, to make everybody happier at least as much as possible? So I have about 12 years of experience doing that. Uh, and finally, like I think a lot of people have said and probably will say, uh, one of my focus areas of, you know, finally being able to move up here and seeing this, we're living in this wonderful community year round is, is where the community is going. And just hearing the concerns of, you know, we need the workforce housing. We want people to be able to use those properties as they, as they would like, but we also need to preserve the natural surroundings that we all love, as well as, you know, the other people that we live around and make sure we have a sustainable, uh, usable and natural, beautiful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any questions for Liz? Yeah. Okay. Um, the next person then is Simon. Simone?
Yes, hi, this is Simon.
Okay, good.
Thanks for getting my last name correct, Simon Ingham. Um, I've lived in McCall for three years. Um, I work remotely doing international logistics. And my wife works for McCall Design and Planning. She is a drafter designer with those guys. Um, I applied for this position because I was interested in getting involved in what's happening in town. I don't have any particular axe to grind. I do like being involved in community activities. I see the commission seats as mostly reviewing that things are within the city code. And if they're within the city code, then uh, we approve those things, but we are the, the guardians of the city code and to make sure that things are happening correctly. Um, that's all I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions, anybody? Okay, then we've got Dave Petty. Dave, are you on the line? Star six?
You can't hear you, Dave.
Is there a picture of a microphone up by your leaves button and doesn't have a slash through it?
Do you have your
Do you want to call my cell phone and then I complete you on speakerphone? This is Meredith. Um, yeah, but we haven't put the noise about.
Hi.
Hi, Dave, go for it.
Okay, thanks guys, sorry. Um, I appreciate the time. I will make it brief. Um, I have been coming to call for over 30 years, summer and winter. Um, I've been a full-time resident for the last three years. During that time, I've been on the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. And this last year, I've been the chairman of that committee. As I spend more time, sorry, I'm moving away from the background anyways. Um, spend more and more time in the community. Uh, my wife and I bought a business last summer. Um, just become more and more aware of the challenges that we face in growth, as the other candidates have talked about. As well as specific um, issues that come up for business owners in the town. We have a beautiful place that we live. I hope to be able to protect it and help the committee and the city staff tighten up some of the zoning, planning and zoning planning and zoning ordinances that may be a little lax. My experience on the Parks and Rec Committee has shown me how city committees work. And I'm just looking forward to being more involved as we go forward. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Everybody. We usually don't have a decision.
So we pick two out of four.
Two out of four?
Four. And this will be a recommendation, like mentioned. First thought, I guess, we take one position at a time until first position. I like the fact that Brian has been here for the length of time. Obviously seen highs and lows and different things over the years. I have a little bit more experience with the town and what it was like 20 years ago. I mean, as a full-time resident, I mean, it's like, that to me is a pretty good way to do it.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
It makes sense to me, that comment. Hopefully, the availability would be such that you wouldn't miss a lot of meetings. But that's been an ongoing challenge with commissioners in general.
Yeah.
Not all.
It's, but, yeah, I mean, really, when you think about it, in the years that I've been here, there hasn't been, we've never canceled a meeting because we had a quorum.
Correct.
You know, and when people were traveling more, you know, I would know months in advance. So I would, you know, tell the planner that time that I was going to be gone for these weeks or whatever. So travel, it can be managed.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like...
I like that he's... I like that he's got a little bit of experience sort of mirroring the natural resources he talks about. Having studied... Having studied the challenges of sort of moving from that natural resource base into the recreational and some of the, just having some experience of trying to manage, keeping our natural resources with experiencing the growth.
Right.
And trying to find that balance between the two. I like that he's got a little bit of experience and a little bit of background from that perspective.
So we want to just kind of work through the other three and then, yeah, we'll have the most process.
Do we make a motion for both or one at a time? For both, both positions? I mean, I think we can make a motion for one position at a time.
That seems better.
I think it makes it cleaner. I would make the motion that we make a recommendation to the City Council for the appointment of Ryan Kinzer.
I'd second that. All in favor?
Aye.
So then the second person was Simon.
Liz.
Liz. I'm sorry. Yeah, Liz, sorry.
Do all these last three?
No, I don't know about Dave because he said they recently bought a business.
Oh, right, right.
But you have the second, the next two. You know, I mean, obviously Liz's got some significant talents and organization and...
Policy contribution.
Yeah, policy.
I was impressed by that.
Yeah.
I have a technical question for you, Brian. Just to give you a hand on Simon's affiliation with a spouse being employed by an architectural firm. Is that a conflict of interest potential or...
I mean, on items that she or her firm are going to be representing, there is potential for that.
Is that even an issue? Am I overthinking that?
They do business, they represent clients here. It is something to keep in mind that he's probably going after to recuse himself from that. Bill, do you have any?
No, Brian, I think you got it right. I just was a preemptive sign-on here. I think you got it right. If, if one of the commissioners represented a party that had an application or a matter pending before the commission, they'd be best advised to recuse themselves from any voting.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. So then, you know, if you look at Dave, who's got CPA and, you know, he's demonstrated a desire to jump right in and get involved in the community already. But he has just bought a business. Having had a business in my own at one time, that can be pretty challenging to break away from.
I can second that as a former business owner.
Yeah. Should we just do, in order of which they vote and vote on? I mean, if we vote, first two, we vote on with a recommendation. We don't get to the second two, but that's just the way it is, I guess. What's that?
You have one one.
Yeah. One position, right, yes. But we have two people if we don't, you know, we're concerned about.
Right.
Real quick, sorry. I just want to see, so these two are replacing who?
So Commissioner Thompson resigned
And that's I have...
several months ago. Three months ago, I believe. And then Commissioner Faraday installed the other.
And she's been here three terms, right?
Yep.
And my third term would come due in November, which we'll go over that later.
Oh.
So, yeah.
Okay, mine comes up in November.
Oh, no.
No, mine goes...
You're still on.
We just... Very fun year term.
I, I feel like I'm, we always live. I think it would be nice to have somebody who's got a strong policy background, a strong sort of organizational able to really, I know we have all this top resources as well, but...
That's my thinking actually as well, how great it is.
Yeah, I mean, it's, like I said from right at the beginning, we usually don't have multiple applicants all who've got, you know, a good-looking resume and, so it makes it difficult. But I would agree that Liz's got skill sets that I would think would, you know, really help all of us. So do you want to make a motion?
I can make a motion, I think.
Good practice.
Okay, so wait, what am I? Yes. I make a motion that we recommend Liz Rock to City Council to fill one of the vacant D and Z positions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So that will go to City Council and then that, is it Tuesday meetings or...?
Uh, City Councils are Thursdays, every other Thursday.
Will they hear that?
They should theoretically hear it before the next.
So, uh, do the applicants typically go to the City Council meeting?
Commissioner Nevek is the most recent that...
I did, I was notified and did attend the City Council.
Yeah, because we were, Steve and I were both county commissioners because we're impact area.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yes, we have all these are city positions.
Yeah, these are both city limited.
All right.
So if you're still on, Liz and Ryan, you've both been recommended to, we've recommended you to the City Council. And they will be meeting on Thursday next week. And typically, an applicant would go to that meeting and if they want... Did you speak to the city?
Maybe ask it out real quick. I think they already have the agenda out for the next meetings. I don't know if it would be on that.
I believe they both signed off, but I will follow up with them with instructions on the next steps.
Great.
Pretty sure that agenda's already, we added to or not.
Okay. Great. So... Simon?
Um, well, oh, two things before we get too far. One, we just wanted to take a moment, thank Commissioner Faraday on the record for nine years of excellent service.
Yeah.
Yep. And then the other is filling the chairman role as you will not be continuing on in that position. So amongst yourselves, you need to make a new election of chairperson.
Should we wait until, oh, wait, just missed someone there?
We're just...
Johanna is the only one that's not here.
Right, gotcha.
Maybe we want to give her an opportunity to...
Just volunteer.
You missed the meeting, so. This is probably a good time, in full disclosure, to take myself out of the running. Because I've done two terms coming up in November. And for some interesting reasons, not because I haven't, I enjoy this. Of all, I volunteer for a lot of things and I enjoy this. But boy, there's been, there's been some stuff overturned by City Council and some directional type of things that I probably shouldn't get into in a public meeting. They concern me that I don't want to do a third term. It's kind of a bummer, you know, that, that force law had pushed me over the, over the thing. That when they, those solar panels got reversed. The 10 square, 20,000 square foot thing, I mean, that was embarrassing to me. When my name got attached to that. It's just on wire. I thought that was a lunacy. I just can't do that anymore. Because it, I'm, it goes against my conscience to, to do that and have what this body does get overturned. And I can name others. That's irrelevant. You guys know what they are. So I will serve my term if you want to attend the next two. And that will be that. Sorry, you hear that? Can totally understand.
Yeah.
So I don't know your authority and you would have the senior position as far as the most time.
Yeah. Kind of wanted to sail off into the sunset. I, you know, I mean, you're pretty new. So is it Johanna or Yawn?
Yeah.
Johanna. You know, I think you've got a good grasp, probably better grasp of a lot of the feet-on-the-ground kind of issues. And, you know, if you, if you would have an interest in doing it, I'd, I'd support that and I think we'd be served well.
I'd be willing to do it. I think you have a gift for that, Robert. I mean, your, your preparation of these meetings is top-line. You know, I picked up on that.
Yeah.
Just your comprehension of how it works and your knowledge of the city as well as the impact area. You're well-grounded, very well-grounded to do that. I appreciate that.
Yeah. And you've attended at least one of the Twin Poles, planning and zoning, you know, those things. I mean, you've taken the initiative to do that. Yeah, I would, that's why I would make a motion that, that we... Oh, for Robert as the chairman. If we need to make a motion.
I believe you would.
Second it or...
I'll second that if that's your motion.
That's my motion.
All right.
All in favor? I guess it's just the three of us.
Aye.
Thank you for your confidence.
You're welcome.
Absolutely.
Get paybacks later.
There you go. Okay, good. I don't think we'll miss a beat. Try not to get too many hiccups.
McCall made one as replacing the signage at the art store. Also on search page, I mean, for the... And we're going to below, we allow to mount allocated to each business within that site. And I think it's also one of the more creative designs we've seen in recent meetings. Not up yet to be considered a nice, there's no lighting proposed at this time, but we're going to, when that happens, an electrician will come to put a new application into those. With the call brewing one. Was a bit of a little bit jarring. Or not. They had to take down the McCall sign that's shared with the main hardware. But then they ran the cost analysis and the code says that if the cost of doing a replacement is less than 50%, the cost of replacing the entire structure, then the one sign in question can be changed. So it's replacing with the rattled-out wood of the old sign that's up there. And they're also removing the upcast lights at the bottom to bring the lighting into compliance. So that's a good thing. And then I guess they're changing their logo to a A M. And I can't necessarily administer the visual content of the sign so that M works. And McCall starts with M, so I guess it makes sense. The last one, oh, the city water system. So they needed a sign that was not able that meets all of the requirements. Sabrina Simmons got it up and then she said she wished it was bigger. It is well under their law coverage, so she could make it bigger if she wanted to. But it just had the same logo as the city itself. Just provides an identifier for this strange building. It's not a house, it is the water treatment facility. Hurry up. And that's, that's all of them.
Cool. All right. Had a couple of things, I guess, back to kind of pre-app, I guess we can start. Actually, I talked about that as far as code. A couple of things that came up in the meeting, but been a long time since I received one from the city. But as far as the neighborhood notification letter, we've had a couple of retirements in the meetings that that's, they seem to don't understand with that. Does that letter state a rough timeframe that they can go to the city website and access the packet so they could see some of this information? Because clearly some of the applicants or neighbors tonight didn't see anything. Where if they could have performed the meeting, it might have answered a bunch of their questions.
It includes my contact information. It says if you want more information, reach out to me. We could definitely consider putting the agenda packet link or just, I mean, it's, that's not going to be ready by the time the filings go out, but we can put the generic link to it.
As of, you know, prior to...
Maybe just as a, you know, prior to a meeting around Friday or something, that should be available. So they can at least have the weekend to be able to review it. Might eliminate some questions that we have to deal with and applicants have to deal with that they can see, or it might create more. But I think that would be good to have in that letter that they could access that packet as a, it might void some phone calls to you as well. And then another thing, I don't know, and it may be on every like this application, again, it looks like a 10,000 square foot home, or not this one, but the lakefront one. There was a way to clarify it more that here's the home, here's deck space, something a little more clarifying of that in general person looking at it, that that's what includes 10,000 square feet.
Yes.
Again, I think they would say, oh, well, that home's only 7,000 or whatever. That might have eliminated or eased some of the concern. So I don't know if there's something we can do at that that can soften blow when we have some of these larger homes. And then with that last one on the code thing, something we should probably have is that synthetic lawns. So we have clear direction for that going forward of what it can be considered.
Right.
There'll probably be more of that eventually.
Yeah, because on the one hand, it sounds like it'd be a good thing. You know, to help trap and infiltrate and select her.
Actually, a little water processing plant.
Yeah.
And some, you know, out of tertiary water, but a primary, I guess. With the gradation strat done correctly with the aggregate.
Yeah. But having said that, it's, it's not in keeping with the natural landscape kind of direction. You know, because otherwise you could have nice fake green stuff down by the water, all around the lake, and that doesn't look right, you know?
Yeah.
So it's kind of, it's maybe up high, maybe.
Something to notify us that we know, get your name.
Right.
Is it going to work in some areas or are you just like, nope, sorry, it's not going to work here yet? Something that's.
I, I have one and I don't got a new neighbor that when he, when he built his place, made his application, he had three 50 by 90 lots and and he was intending to build a very small cabin on one of those. There was a small cabin on on another one. And, and the third lot didn't have anything on it. And he was going through the process. And he's an architect and knows what to do. Going through the process of getting the permits and so on and, and right at the last minute, I mean, two or three days before the D and Z meeting, business days, he was informed that he was on a corner. And so he was going to have to have 20 feet, 20 feet. And it's described as like a material and you know, however they described that. And this is in the Pet Lakes Club. Both roads that, that he's on the corner go to nowhere. They end and never will go anyplace because there's a park out there. And so what he ended up having to do to rectify it, well, he said, I don't, I didn't see that anywhere in the code. And he was working with Morgan and, and Morgan informed him that, that it's something that City Council enacted now 15 years ago or something that's never been codified. And so if you, if you could really look at that one as something that I'm not saying it shouldn't be right or shouldn't be, but it wasn't codified. He was able, because he was an architect and knew John Russell surveying, and they, they were able to combine some lots and make everything happen so he could get construction going. But, you know, it's one that needs to be brought forward, I guess.
Yeah, I think it's kind of blended into the code. Do you really have to do a deep dive to figure it out? So I don't know if the clarification of corner lots have its own subsection or something to make a little bit clearer because I know I've looked at it before, so I can figure it out here and over here. Try to figure out, okay, is that an arterial feed line, you know, road? I don't know. If that would simplify to have separate thing for corner lots over here.
We do have a residential design guideline that's on our website that is a little more user-friendly version of the code requirements as far as setbacks and eve heights and things like that that people typically get hit up on.
Yeah, it was, anyway, it was, he was able to work through it, but almost lost his opportunity to build that year. Okay. Anybody have anything else? Make a motion, Adrian?
Sure.